All righty. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 21st, 2019. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to employment history of particular individuals and contractual negotiations?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for October 21st, 2019. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Michael and Julia and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our Yorktown community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Rosemarie Bizarro, the father of Natalie Torriari, the brother-in-law of Angelo Napolitano, the mother-in-law, the mother of Mary Ann Covelo, the brother-in-law of Mary Longrello, and the father-in-law of Michael Vogt and a former teacher, Audrey Harlow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Mrs. Roberts, thank you for inviting us to your house tonight. I will turn it over to Dr. Hatter.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm sorry. I apologize that we were a little late coming out of our meeting. As the father of two children in this age group, I know exactly how much those extra eight minutes that we were behind coming out of our executive session was. So I appreciate your patience with us this evening. Before we begin our good news presentation, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our Board of Education. This week marks the beginning of Board of Education Recognition Week across New York State. And here in Yorktown, we have such a terrific Board of Education. They work tirelessly to ensure that our school district is governed in a child-centered way that supports best practices in teaching and learning through smart educational policy, excellent stewardship of taxpayer monies, and meticulous attention to our facilities here in the district. It's truly a pleasure to work with this board. I appreciate all that you do for our students, for our school district, and for our community each day. And at this time, I just, for a very brief remarks, I'd like to invite our district PTSA president, Mr. Fideli, to the podium. I believe he brought something for you.
This will be very brief. Again, I have the privilege of serving as the district president, and it's an honor to serve for this district. And I can't thank the board enough for everything they do for our children, our schools. And with that, I have to give credit to my wife. She came up with an idea. We have wonderful Yorktown tote bags, all personalized, and we came up with a phrase, or my wife did, "We thank you for your commitment to our schools, our board." And there are all items in here that are mint-themed, so...
Did Jethro come here?
On behalf of the council of district PTSAs, we thank you for your tireless hours and schools of Blue Ribbon School. So thank you very much.
Ron? Thank you for everything you've done for us, but we want to thank you because you do a tireless job as a district PTA president, too. So thank you very much.
This evening, we're so fortunate for the viewing audience at home. You'll notice that our set design is a little bit different than you've grown accustomed to. We're here at Crompond School broadcasting our PTA meeting from Crompond as opposed to our middle school. We will be back at the middle school a little bit later on in the school year as we approach budget season, certainly. We have some wonderful fourth and fifth grade students joining us this evening. They have been doing some remarkable work in ESTEAM, and they, of course, well embedded in the work of ESTEAM are the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. I'm really excited to hear the presentation that our children have been preparing for. At this time, I would like to turn the program over to Crompond Elementary School Principal, Dr. Roberts.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, Mrs. Carbone, Mr. Magnani, and Board of Education trustees. We are honored to be sharing Crompond School's good news with all of you this evening, most especially on Board of Education Recognition Night. We publicly thank you for your selfless gift of love, time, and devotion to our students, our staff, and our community. Our goals this evening are to highlight how our work is continually focused on the Board of Education goals as outlined in Dr. Hatter's 2020 vision for 2020. The mission of the Yorktown Central School District focuses on providing our children comprehensive learning experiences that emphasize the education of the whole child. The work we are thrilled to share with you tonight focuses specifically on the areas of our mission which promote valuing diversity and global consciousness, developing an understanding of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, and making good choices, encouraging moral conscience, promoting self-respect, and demonstrating respect for others. What better way to keep our lens centered on our mission than to demonstrate to all of you and to our community how Crompond School continues to expand its teaching and learning of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals with ESTEAM at the core of our work? This past summer, a team of our devoted staff worked collaboratively across grade levels to design a year-long plan which incorporated ESTEAM, the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and project-based learning. We are taking every opportunity to weave the principles of ESTEAM and the UN Sustainable Development Goals into our work. We have the honor of working with our students, our future leaders, our world changers on a daily basis, as they learn about the importance of making a difference in the lives of others to a stronger and sustainable world for future generations. This evening, our students will present what we have accomplished thus far, and our plans for the school year focus specifically on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Our collective hope is to continually think beyond the classroom walls and work collaboratively to provide our children with authentic learning experiences that promote the education of the whole child. What you will see is our district mission in action. In Dr. Hatter's October newsletter, he reminded us of the message of guest speaker Jean Paul Gonzalez, which was to always put one's greatest effort. Mr. Gonzalez used the phrase "be a shark," and he provided all members of the audience with two shark teeth, at one as a reminder to always be our best and the other to present to someone who may need a gentle reminder about the essence of always putting forth their best effort. Our best effort is centered on building an awareness of the challenges we face in making the world a better place for others, and how our actions, regardless of how small, have the power to promote a positive impact for others. At Crompond and throughout the district, we are committed to being world changers. Our work with ESTEAM and the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals provides us a forum to think critically and deeply about how our small victories create ripples which positively impact others. Please join me in welcoming our future, our world changers, our children, from the classes of Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Covall, Mrs. Flor, Mrs. Kivell, and Mrs. Velliante. I proudly introduce our first speaker, Claire.
In September, we focus on the United Nations Sustainable Goal 16, which is peace, justice, and strong institutions.
Crompond celebrated International Day of Peace. The classes created pinwheels decorated with our ideas about peace. We planted our pinwheels outside of the school to show our community we are working towards
Each class designed a charter to help create peace within our classrooms. We brainstormed how we want to feel to be successful learners. We want to make our classrooms a positive place for learning.
Some of the ways we want to feel are accepted, proud, respected, safe, and encouraged. Here are some of our classroom charters. In our class, we are focused on the idea that everything you do matters. Our actions go out into the world like ripples in the water.
Our class charter reflects on our class theme, shoot for the moon. Even if you miss, you will land amongst the stars.
A box of crayons has many different colors and sizes. Some are bigger and some are smaller. They all manage to live together peacefully in the same box.
Our charter shows our theme, you never know how far you could soar until you try.
This month, we are working on planting the seeds of peace by focusing on the United Nations Goal 15, life on land.
During the farm fest, community members visit our school to share examples of sustainable living within our own community. We visited with a bookkeeper, tasted kale, learned about composting and healthy soil.
We read The Boy Who Changed the World and learned about the butterfly effect. Everything we do matters. Here are some heroes who focused on improving life on land.
Our group chose George Washington Carver. George Washington Carver was born in 1861 in Diamond Grove, Missouri. When Carver was a child, he was enslaved. He was an inventor who discovered multiple uses for peanuts, soybeans, and potatoes. He eventually invented more than 300 uses for peanuts, such as flour, paste, insulation, paper, wallboard, wood stains, soap, shaving cream, and skin lotion. George Washington Carver also experimented with medicines from peanuts, such as antiseptics of prevention of infrexion when your skin is like a tissue, and laxatives.
Despite being born into slavery, George Washington Carver used his intelligence and interest in science and nature to create over 300 uses for peanuts. Some of his products included medicines such as antiseptics. This all began when he became concerned about how a single crop, cotton, was depleting the value of the soil. He encouraged farmers to plant peanuts and soybeans. This idea was responsible for improving the soil quality and providing farmers with more sustainable crops. From his work with peanuts and soybeans, Carver developed products that have helped millions of people.
Our group chose Norman Borlaug. Norman Borlaug was born on March 25th, 1914, in Cresso, Iowa. He was raised on his grandfather's farm. When Norman was an adult, he attended University of Minnesota. Norman Borlaug's interest in farming and nature led him to create what was called Green Revolution. Norman became interested in solving a serious problem. There was a plant fungus, especially on wheat and rice, and it was killing the plants. Norman and his team discovered a way to stop the fungus. He did this by taking materials each year for three years, and with those materials, they made special seeds that were resistant to the fungus.
The special seed was a seed that could not be affected by the fungus, but it would still be able to produce twice the amount of wheat and rice that ragglow seeds produce. This discovery became linked with the Green Revolution, and that helped Norman win the Nobel Prize. In conclusion, Norman Borlaug did a lot for this world. Without him, billions of people would have died without the special seeds and his great work in the Green Revolution.
John Audubon was an American ornithologist, naturalist, and painter, whose work led to the creation of the National Audubon Society. John painted pictures of many different types of birds. We think that John Audubon helped the environment because his story is one of victory over bad luck. His accomplishment is widely known and appreciated by bird lovers everywhere. He truly summarizes the spirit of a young America when the wilderness was limitless and charming. He was a person of strength and endurance, as well as a sharp observer of birds and nature.
The Audubon Society is a nonprofit environmental organization dedicated to conservation. John Audubon documented America's 1,065 species of birds for his Birds of America. Those a society's focus is the conservation and study of bird species, and now protects animals and their habitats. With over 600,000 members and 500 chapters in America, the society works for passage of important environmental policies such as the Endangered Species and Clean Air Acts.
In November, we will focus on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal 2, Zero
Did you know that one out of five children do not have enough food to eat?
In the United States! But we will raise awareness and take action by collecting food to donate to our community.
In January and February, we will focus on the UN Sustainable Development Goal 4, Quality in Education.
We will work with our families on sharing ideas and experiences, like a visit to a historical site or learning some words in a new language.
In March, we will focus on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal Number Three, Good Health and Well-Being, by celebrating International Day of Happiness on March 20th,
Some ways we will show happiness are: we will smile, share, and eat healthy foods.
Exercise, be grateful, give back.
Think positively, spend some time alone, be mindful.
Dream, listen to music, say thank you and mean it.
In this spring, we will focus on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, numbers 13 and 14, climate actions and life below water.
Oceans cover 70% of our planet, and we rely on the oceans for food, energy, and water. We must protect them by eliminating pollution and start to protect all marine life around the world.
All of our actions affect others. We are capable of being world changers. These rocks symbolize the ripples of our actions in the world. We present these rocks to you to remind you that everything you do matters. Our ripples create peace and help to make the world a better place. We appreciate the actions you take to make the Yorktown School District such a wonderful place to learn.
I would like to introduce Ms. Celestree and the High Seas. They will sing "We Are the Children."
the obvious rewards, as I repeat myself, with the recognition of our high schools of Blue Ribbon School. So thank you very much.
Ron? Thank you. We thank you for everything you've done for us, but we want to thank you because you do a tireless job as a district PTA president, too. So thank you very much.
This evening, we're so fortunate for the viewing audience at home. You'll notice that our set design is a little bit different than you've grown accustomed to. We're here at Crompond School broadcasting our PTA meeting from Crompond as opposed to our middle school. We will be back at the middle school a little bit later on in the school year as we approach budget season, certainly. We have some wonderful fourth and fifth grade students joining us this evening. They have been doing some remarkable work in ESTEAM, and they, of course, well embedded in the work of ESTEAM are the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. I'm really excited to hear the presentation that our children have been preparing for. At this time, I would like to turn the program over to Crompond Elementary School Principal, Dr. Roberts.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, Mrs. Carbone, Mr. Magnani, and Board of Education trustees. We are honored to be sharing Crompond School's good news with all of you this evening, most especially on Board of Education Recognition Night. We publicly thank you for your selfless gift of love, time, and devotion to our students, our staff, and our community. Our goals this evening are to highlight how our work is continually focused on the Board of Education goals as outlined in Dr. Hatter's 2020 vision for 2020. The mission of the Yorktown Central School District focuses on providing our children comprehensive learning experiences that emphasize the education of the whole child. The work we are thrilled to share with you tonight focuses specifically on the areas of our mission which promote valuing diversity and global consciousness, developing an understanding of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, and making good choices, encouraging moral conscience, promoting self-respect, and demonstrating respect for others. What better way to keep our lens centered on our mission than to demonstrate to all of you and to our community how Crompond School continues to expand its teaching and learning of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals with ESTEAM at the core of our work? This past summer, a team of our devoted staff worked collaboratively across grade levels to design a year-long plan which incorporated ESTEAM, the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and project-based learning. We are taking every opportunity to weave the principles of ESTEAM and the UN Sustainable Development Goals into our work. We have the honor of working with our students, our future leaders, our world changers on a daily basis, as they learn about the importance of making a difference in the lives of others to a stronger and sustainable world for future generations. This evening, our students will present what we have accomplished thus far, and our plans for the school year focus specifically on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Our collective hope is to continually think beyond the classroom walls and work collaboratively to provide our children with authentic learning experiences that promote the education of the whole child. What you will see is our district mission in action. In Dr. Hatter's October newsletter, he reminded us of the message of guest speaker Jean Paul Gonzalez, which was to always put one's greatest effort. Mr. Gonzalez used the phrase "be a shark," and he provided all members of the audience with two shark teeth, at one as a reminder to always be our best and the other to present to someone who may need a gentle reminder about the essence of always putting forth their best effort. Our best effort is centered on building an awareness of the challenges we face in making the world a better place for others, and how our actions, regardless of how small, have the power to promote a positive impact for others. At Crompond and throughout the district, we are committed to being world changers. Our work with ESTEAM and the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals provides us a forum to think critically and deeply about how our small victories create ripples which positively impact others. Please join me in welcoming our future, our world changers, our children, from the classes of Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Covall, Mrs. Flor, Mrs. Kivell, Mrs. Covall, Mrs. Velliante, Ms. Celestree, and Mr. Flanagan for all their work tonight that made this possible.
Crompond, you did it again. That was absolutely amazing. We really enjoyed the presentation. Faculty and staff, and Dr. Roberts, Mr. Avdeck, thank you so much for embracing the vision, mobilizing the vision in the classroom. The work of the students speaks volumes, and the song we heard, the work that they're embarking on, the things that we see throughout our classroom visitations are truly inspiring, and we appreciate all the work that you do with our children each day. Students, you were great. You were absolutely great. You came up to the microphone. You had all of these people in the room, and you weren't shy, and you spoke so well. You made great eye contact, certainly with me. You looked right at me. Boys and girls, that's a whole 'nother skill that I'm so pleased that you're developing as students here in Yorktown. You spoke so passionately. You spoke so intelligently, and I'm really, really excited about the work that you're going to be doing this year. So, boys and girls seated here, boys and girls behind me, very well done. I am one proud superintendent tonight. Well done.
Dr. Roberts, Mr. Avdeck, please, we want to thank you as well. You thank everybody else. We want to thank you for leading such a wonderful building. You have phenomenal staff in this building, and we are always so proud of, surprised, and pleased with what you come up with. And we know you have wonderful students. Parents, thank you for these wonderful students that you send us because they are phenomenal students to work with. So thank you all. Thank you, staff, for being here.
So I will share with you, we have a wonderful, wonderful meeting ahead. We're going to look at some policies. We're going to make some appointments here. We're going to take a five-minute intermission just in case your children are anything like mine and bedtime is approaching. So we'll take just a very short recess to allow you to exit to continue on with your evening, and then if, for those who want to stay, you're welcome to stay. I promise you, there'll be some seats in the front row open. Have a great night.
Okay? All right. That was phenomenal. We love going on the road, and Crompond is like the best place to be. Thank you. We are going to go to the superintendent report. Anybody wishing to speak for public comments? Okay, we can go to the superintendent.
So I just want to share a few items. This evening, I'll be recommending to the Board of Education that we appoint Ms. Nicole Tocco as school psychologist here in the district. I wanted to acknowledge Nicole here in the audience. I understand the vote will come a little bit later this evening, but I did want to acknowledge Nicole's presence in the audience. Nicole, thank you so much for being here and joining us this evening. We're looking forward to having you onboard. So on Friday evening, I'll share just some updates with the Board of Education and our community at this point. This past Friday evening, our varsity football team opened the playoffs with a very decisive victory, but the most impressive aspect of the evening was the tribute, the pregame You had all of these people in the room, and you weren't shy, and you spoke so well. You made great eye contact, certainly with me. You looked right at me. Boys and girls, that's a whole nother skill that I'm so pleased that you're developing as students here in Yorktown. You spoke so passionately, you spoke so intelligently, and I'm really, really excited about the work that you're going to be doing this year. So, boys and girls seated here, boys and girls behind me, very well done. I am one proud superintendent tonight. Well done.
Dr. Roberts, Mr. Abdeck, please, we want to thank you as well. You thank everybody else. We want to thank you for leading such a wonderful building. You have phenomenal staff in this building, and we are always so proud of, surprised and pleased with what you come up with. And we know you have wonderful students. Parents, thank you for these wonderful students that you send us, because they are phenomenal students to work with. So, thank you all. Thank you, staff, for being here.
So, I will share with you, we have a wonderful, wonderful meeting ahead. We're going to look at some policies. We're going to make some appointments here. We're going to take a five-minute intermission, just in case your children are anything like mine, and bedtime is approaching. So, we'll take just a very short recess to allow you to exit to continue on with your evening, and then for those who want to stay, you're welcome to stay. I promise you, there'll be some seats in the front row open. Have a great night.
Okay. All right. That was phenomenal. We love going on the road, and Crompond is like the best place to be. Thank you. We are going to go to the superintendent report.
Oh, public comment.
Anybody wishing to speak for public comments? Okay, we can go to the superintendent.
So, I just want to share a few items. This evening, I'll be recommending to the Board of Education that we appoint Ms. Nicole Toco as school psychologist here in the district. I wanted to acknowledge Nicole here in the audience. I understand the vote will come a little bit later this evening, but I did want to acknowledge Nicole's presence in the audience. Nicole, thank you so much for being here and joining us this evening. We're looking forward to having you onboard. So, on Friday evening, I'll share just some updates with the Board of Education and our community at this point. This past Friday evening, our varsity football team opened the playoffs with a very decisive victory, but the most impressive aspect of the evening was the tribute, the pregame tribute, to our veterans and local first responders. We had the police motorcycles lead the procession. We had the Westchester County Emerald Society Pipes and Drums there performing, and they were wonderful. The veterans of the United States Armed Forces led the first responders in. It was wonderful to see our veterans out. Then we had the police department fired, followed by the fire department, followed by the volunteer ambulance corps. Officer Angel Garcia sung the National Anthem, and then after that, we had a nice surprise. We had the Westchester County Police Aviation Unit conduct a flyover with their helicopter. It was a remarkable tribute. Such an amazing night for Yorktown. I really do thank our athletic director, Mr. Rob Barrett, and his assistant, Jeanette Martimucci, for making the evening happen. It was such a wonderful night that in honor of the first responders, we didn't collect it in admission fee at the door, rather, we collected donations, and all donations will go to Yorktown families in need for Thanksgiving meals. So, just a wonderful, wonderful night all around. We've already begun planning how this looks for next year. Yorktown High School this Thursday evening will be hosting the annual Putnam Northern Westchester College Fair. We anticipate having approximately 300 colleges on hand. That's this Thursday at 6:00 P.M. Even if you don't have a child who is a junior or senior, it's still a wonderful, wonderful event and opportunity for all of our students to attend at the high school. The fall athletic season is winding down. I'm so proud to share that many of our teams will be competing in postseason play. So, whether it's football, girl soccer, boy soccer, volleyball, field hockey, swimming, and cross-country, all of those teams have some postseason opportunities available to them, and I encourage anyone and everyone to attend their events. The schedule is posted on our athletics webpage, and again, just a terrific, terrific family atmosphere. The Yorktown High School Fall Comedy is almost main, is the title. That will be just a few short weeks away, November 15th and 16th, beginning at 7:00 P.M. in the Yorktown High School Auditorium. For seating information, I encourage you to contact Ms. Stock, our drama club director and chorus teacher at the high school. Finally, I just want to share a little information on our cable channel. So, you may have noticed some trouble with the cable channel. In some instances, it's just a black screen, and I want the community to be aware, we're addressing that. We're working with both cable providers, Cable and FiOS, to ensure that the channel is restored. There was just a couple of technical glitches that we're working through. In the interim, all Board of Education and district videos are available for free through our YouTube channel, so I encourage you to go there to access the videos in the interim. I anticipate having the channel up and running at some point mid-November. And that concludes my report for this evening.
We are up to board reports. We can start with Audit Committee, Rashmi.
So, our Audit Committee met on October 10th. Lisa Rule was there, myself, Ron, Tom Cole, along with Alicia Sigvarstein, our district treasurer. We met with our external auditor to review the draft financials for our year that ended June 30th, 2019, and they will be presenting to the board on November 4th, so two weeks from now. They will be here to present to the board. Our internal audit, the topic for the intensive review for this year will be fundraising, and we will be meeting with them at some point to kind of, you know, get started on that and, you know, move forward with that. That's about it.
Okay. All right. So, we'll go on to fiscal. Just pass it around.
Got it. Fiscal Advisory Committee, we have a meeting scheduled for the morning of November 6th, where we will be discussing school districts' current financial positions, as well as some projections, along with a discussion about the claims auditor process.
Policy, Cheryl.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to give an update for the last two months. We met in September, and we last met on October 16th, and throughout those meetings, we've reviewed many policies, of which we've made changes or not, but reviewed seven and adopted seven policies, and we were deleted, we were able to delete five exhibits that either are no longer in use or are repeated somewhere else. And we next meet on November 13th.
Thank you. And then the steering update, I hope everybody has a chance to see the wall that is finally completed, the retaining wall with all the plantings and everything. It came out beautiful, and hopefully, it addresses one of the large problems we had, which was standing water on the side of the building. So, that's a good thing. We are working currently on projects that are going to be worked on, done for 2020. We have the nurses suite at Mohansick, the cafeteria, or the kitchen, actually, in Brookside, and hopefully, the gym in the high school, gym renovations, along with some other pieces here and there. Air conditioning in the large spaces in the elementary schools. I don't know if I forgot anything else. Bleacher, yeah, bleachers outside on the turf court, and, you know, everything will start to come in. Some stuff is up at SED to be reviewed, other stuff is coming back from SED, and we'll start to go out to bid to see where we are with the projects. So, that's it. Let's trade this. Okay. So, now, we're going to go to board action items. We have approval of minutes. A motion to approve the minutes for the September 23rd, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for September 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a motion to approve the claims audit report for September 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have a motion to approve the extra classroom report for September 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Policies. We have a motion for the first read and adoption of the following policy at 6840, food purchases for district meetings and functions. Did you have any questions on it? Kind of a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We first read and adopted. We're fast-tracking it.
Urgent issue.
Be resolved that the following exhibits shall be deleted from the policy manual, because they are either available on the district website under athletics or updated as needed. Therefore, there's no need to include them within the policy or regulations. We are deleting the 5281 exhibits, one through four, and 5285 exhibit extracurricular activity policy.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have first reads of the following policies: 5280 interscholastic athletic athletes, 5281 athletic placement process for interscholastic athletic program, and 5285 Yorktown High School academic eligibility policy for athletics and extracurricular activities. Anybody make comments on them? No, thank you. Personnel. Okay. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have under-certified personnel, two appointments, additions to the substitute list, teaching stipends, other compensations. We have our extra credits effective 9/11/19. We have coaches and co-curricular for 1920, coaches and co-curricular appointments, and under classified personnel, we have two appointments to civil service.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Business office. A contract for services. A motion to enter into an agreement between the State University of New York Purchase and the Yorktown Central School District for use of the Concert Hall of the Performing Arts Center for the Yorktown High School graduation on June 27th, 2020, at a fee not to exceed $14,500.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the payment of Westchester County Department of Health Civil Penalty Case Number PH 7946-19 SPI for swimming pool code violations in the amount of $600.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Change order. A motion to accept the change order number one from Vinco Builders for unused allowance dollars in the G.C. contract for the 19 Phase One Capital Reserve Projects at Crompond and Brookside in the amount of $8,450.92.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Budget transfer. A motion to approve the budget transfer listed below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the reimbursement, medical reimbursement listed above. I'm sorry.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposals. A total approved for the month is $5,223.82.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Special education. A motion to approve the following placements as of October 21st, 2019.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations at Brookside, $400 in the Brookside PTA for the third-grade field trip to see the Nutcracker at the Westchester City Center, or is it County Center? Westchester County Center.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are up to a public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? No, we're up to a board comment.
Pass it down when you start with it. So, being at Crompond was so much fun. I love seeing the little ones. There were two things that they said this evening that struck me. One is that a box of crayons has all different colors, and they're all different, and they all coexist in the same box, which I think is something we should all listen to a little bit more often. And the second thing they said before they handed out these rocks to all of us, which looks like they hand-painted, which is so sweet, is that everything we do has a ripple effect on everyone around us, and I think that's something we should pay heed to.
Actually, I'll piggyback off of what Lisa has said. They mentioned the U.N.'s Sustainable Goals, and the Sustainable Goal for October is life on land. So, I thought it was so creative and such a time to not only be, hand out the rocks that are a ripple effect, but obviously, rocks, you know, represent life on land, and I thought the beautiful motivational messages on top, you know, handcrafted on top of it are absolutely beautiful. But I also would comment that that's not the only thing Crompond, where they exhibit life on land, they do so many other things, incorporating our environment as far as the garden outside and all the beautiful things they do to the ground. So, great job tonight, Crompond.
Yeah, to add to what Lisa and Cheryl said, Crompond is always, you know, such a special place, and I think Dr. Roberts summed it up the best by saying, you know, they were, they are our future leaders, and I can't wait to, you know, see these students as they go through, you know, middle school and high school, and, you know, it's such exciting times. I mean, just to come up here, you know, and speak in front of adults and sing, come with the props and the posters and, you know, speak so eloquently, they make us proud. So, great job.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's said it already, but I was struck so much by the maturity of the speakers tonight, and how wonderful they presented their ideas and their thoughts, and really resonated, and what a wonderful turnout. It's always wonderful when we have a full room of people and get to see just how great our students are.
Yeah, I like Crompond. It is one of my favorite fond memories here. Laurie is great, everyone's great.
Top five.
What?
Top five.
Top five, yeah, top five, well. It's kind of up there, though. It's a tough act to follow, I got to be honest with you, if I'm judging, and I'm not. The parents, I'd like to thank them for coming out. Good turnout. Michelle, props to her, she's always great. So, I'm kind of biased to Crompond, I like it a lot, but thank them and thank everyone else.
I agree with everybody said, it was a wonderful night at Crompond. I'm so grateful we get to come to the school and see them in their own areas and how they react in their own situations. It's wonderful, and the room was full, in case anybody didn't know. The room was packed tonight. It was wonderful. They were standing in the back, so it was wonderful. I also want to mention that I had the pleasure of being at the football game Friday night, and I got to watch the first responders being honored and recognized, and it was such a wonderful thing, and you could see that they were so appreciative for being respected and recognized, and our students, of course, they were wonderful. It was just a wonderful night, and I'm proud to be a Yorktown resident when I see our staff doing stuff like that. And I want to thank Mr. Barrett and Ms. Martimucci, because they also, you didn't say, they also gave them all little goody bags at the end. So, they did a wonderful, wonderful job, so it was really nice to see, so thank you.
Just two things to close. Number one, on Wednesday, October 23rd, we'll be welcoming our senior citizen friends to come in for coffee and for breakfast. I'm really looking forward to that morning. It's such a great, great experience for all of us. I learned much, and they learned, and it's just such a wonderful, wonderful experience all around, so I'm looking forward to that. And finally, as part of Board Recognition Week, we have certificates for each board trustee from the New York State School Boards Association that I will share with you and I will distribute after the meeting, but I certainly wanted to acknowledge that. And just finally, thank you all for what you do. It really is a privilege to work with each and every one of you, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Lisa, Tom, anything? We good? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Thank you.
Lisa, Tom, anything?
We good? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed.
So moved.